I'm going to call to order the November 13th, 2025, meeting of the Forest Park D-91 Board of Education. May I have a roll call?
Jed Brewer.
Here.
Andrea Morello. Monique Cotton.
Here.
John Lyons. Steve Rumel.
Here.
Shannon Woods.
Here.
Monica Angelo. Here.
For those who care to participate, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Cotton, could you please read the mission statement?
Our mission in partnership with home and community is to educate each individual child in a safe and nurturing environment. We will foster respect and self-worth, teach skills relevant to contemporary life, and promote academic success and creative expression. We will encourage an appreciation of the rich cultural diversity of our community and instill a sense of wonder for the future to enable our students to become lifelong learners and responsible citizens of the world.
Thank you. Mr. Rumel, the vision statement?
Forest Park Public School District 91 will be acknowledged by all as a safe, nurturing, and diverse learning community that establishes the highest standards for innovation and continuous improvement to achieve academic excellence and global citizenship for each individual child.
Equity statement. Recognizing that systemic bias has plagued our educational system, we commit to nurturing dialogue around all issues of inequity, including culture, race, faith, socioeconomic status, gender identity, sexual orientation, and differentability as they pertain to classroom practices, school and district structures, and policies and procedures. We support actions removing barriers to opportunities that allow children to reach their full potential. Ms. Angelo, the honoring Native American land, please.
We, Forest Park Board of Education, would like to acknowledge that this meeting is being held on the traditional lands of the Peoria, Potawatomi, Miami, Sioux, Kikapu people, and pay our respects to elders, both past and present.
Thank you. Number four, the consent agenda for the board. Is there anything anyone would like removed? All right. May I have a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Jed Brewer.
Hi.
Andrea Morello. Monique Cotton.
Hi.
John Lyons.
Hi.
Steve Rumel.
Hi.
Shannon Woods.
Hi.
Monica Angelo.
Hi.
All right. Number five, correspondence?
I'm sorry, excuse me. We have an email from the PTO. And hello, school board. The Forest Park School District PTO would like to update you all on what's been up with the PTO. About us, the Forest Park PTO connects families, schools, staffs, and schools through events, fundraiser, and appreciation efforts that enrich the student experience across D-91. We support all D-91 schools as one united organization. We plan school-specific and district-wide events. Monthly meetings, first Wednesdays, are open to all, in person or online. There is no membership fees. If you're a D-91 caregiver, you're in. How to get involved? Join a committee. Help plan events, small or big. Support fundraisers from restaurant nights to popcorn sales. Volunteer when you can. Sign-ups are shared on Facebook and in newsletters. Questions or ideas? Please reach out anytime at pto@fpsd91.org. Current updates. The Forest Park PTO is looking for volunteers to sell concessions at the FPMs Boys Basketball Home Games, which typically start at 4:00 PM and end around 6:15. We will provide all concessions, trainings, and supplies you need. You just show up and help us raise some funds. If you're interested in helping raise funds, please email us at pto@fpsd91.org. Monday, December 8th, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM, is our dine and donate event at Culvers on Roosevelt. Mention D-91 PTO, and 10% of all orders will be donated to us. Thank you for your support. As always, you can reach out via email at pto@fpsd91.org. Search Forest Park 91 PTO to find us on Facebook as well. Thank you all for your time. Sincerely, the 2526 D-91 PTO Board.
All right. Matters of consideration from the audience?
Ms. Shannon Sherman?
I have something to read first. The Board of Education welcomes public comments at its meetings. This is the official time devoted to comments by community members. Following the public comments, the Board takes the citizens' comments under advisement. All speakers who wish to address the Board during this time must identify themselves before they speak. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual, and the Board asks that no specific names be mentioned. In order to allow for the most efficient use of meeting time, if there are several speakers addressing the same topic, the Board President may set a time limit for that topic. Any citizen wishing to address the Board on a public matter is encouraged to contact the district office before the meeting at 708-366-5700, extension 3301. According to the Illinois School Code, items such as those dealing with personnel, individual student discipline, the purchase of land, security, and legal actions may be addressed in executive session by the Board of Education.
Can you hear me? Okay. My name's Shannon Sherman. And should I move? Okay. I'm here to share my experience as a music therapist in the district. I worked in this district for 12 years as an independent contractor providing music therapy services. For the most part, I loved working here. During my time in the district, I built strong relationships with staff and students. I believe I was a valued service provider and was told that staff and students were happy with music therapy, that I was professional, that I communicated well, and was flexible and easy to work with. I was let go in a very unprofessional way. Early last March, I asked the special education director to let me know of any changes to my contract for the upcoming school year, and I let that person know that I hoped to have my contract signed by the beginning of April. That person was inconsistent and did not initially respond to my emails, waiting until the very end of March to respond in any way, despite multiple attempts to contact him. When we finally met in April, after talking for over an hour, I was told to email him a contract. He then did not respond to my emails or sign my contract, and when he did, he did not answer questions about the upcoming school year. Over the summer, in early July, he called me to offer me a 25% pay decrease. I had worked in the district for 12 years and had never had a pay increase, and told him I was uninterested in a decrease in pay. I had also told him this when we met in April, but he had insisted that he wanted to work with me. In July, he continued to say that he really wanted to work with me, and we had another call brainstorming how to make this work. He told me that he wanted me to continue to work in the district because he knew I was well-liked, provided an important service, that he valued what I did, and that he appreciated my flexibility, adaptability, and that I was trying to make things work with him. He then continued to string me along, finally calling me on August 6th to let me know he had decided to go in a different direction, this being just a couple of weeks before the school year was to begin. He did not let me know in a timely manner that he was not renewing my contract, and this was unprofessional on many levels. This deprived me of appropriate closure with staff and students, some of whom I worked with for 12 years. It also left me in a financial bind because he waffled and then finally let me know his decision five months after I initially requested a contract. Treating a supposedly valued longtime contractor this way is bad business and reflects poorly on the district and program. Thank you.
Thank you. Number seven. We are going to begin our presentations for the superintendent's search firms, and first we have School Exec Connect.
Good evening, Board of Education. Thank you very much for this opportunity to present. My name is Kevin Shiski. I'm from School. Does that connect?
David Brusak.
There we go. Perfect. So we have a few slides for you, and then we'll give you some time at the end. Inside your packet, you have our proposal as well as a presentation. If there's any questions, by all means, just stop and ask us. But a little bit about who we are as consultants, a little about that. So I spent about 34 years in education. I just retired from Hillside as a superintendent. I've worked in large districts, small districts, worked in a variety of organizations. In terms of this, education has been my life. And as I retired, what will I do with some of my time, and how do I give back? And working in small districts, the opportunity to continue to work with districts and find great leaders is what I hope to do. So a variety of opportunities I've had in my career. Teacher, assistant principal, principal, and then superintendent. Turn over to David.
Good evening, and thanks again for inviting us out this evening for this very important search. How's everyone doing? Good. All right. My name is David Brusak, and I have been fortunate to be in education for 36 years, and I have worked in urban districts and suburban districts. I started off as a teacher, became a dean at a middle school, elementary principal for about 13 years, director of school improvement in a large unit district in the last 10 years as an assistant superintendent of human resources in neighboring District 89, Melrose Park, Maywood, and Broadview. During that time, I also had an opportunity often to be a part of labor relations and school law, conflict resolution, and so on. So it's been a good run because as of this past June, I retired and started a new chapter. So there we have it. I'd like to continue a bit and share a little bit about School Exec Connect. It's been around for quite some time, a little over a couple of decades at this point. Over 600 searches, thank you, over 600 searches and about 60-plus consultants nationwide. One thing we do prioritize is DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion when selecting candidates and consultants. One item I'd like to emphasize is that we have a record, an outstanding record of when we conduct any particular search, we do it on time and always within budget. And we also have a 97% success rate after the first contract between the superintendent chosen and the Board of Education. Let's look into a little bit more now in detail by providing an overview on how we personalize the search for you. So within the first 30 days, we'll meet with the Board of Education, and we will create a candidate profile. This is based on what I liked when the meeting first opened. Took a moment. I thought it was great to talk about your vision, talk about your mission, your equity statement, because a lot of times when strategic plans are written and those sorts of things, there's a lot of time into that language, and then they are put into a book sometimes on a shelf, and nobody really ever revisits them. So to revisit that at every board meeting, and I'm assuming you do that at every board meeting, is a healthy thing. So what we will do is we'll take a look at your vision and mission statements, and speak with the Board, and then pair that up with our search. Our next stage will be conducting forums for parents and teachers, support staff, administration. And we solicit whatever we can during those forums to help build the needs and wants from different community members. Should you choose to even extend that to village members or potentially middle school students, we could certainly work with that as well. And finally, we'll end up doing what we're expected to really do in the long run, which is screen, interview, and select the candidate that will be most fitting for District 91. At this time, I'm going to turn it on over to Kevin.
So you see those four phases there in terms of Phase A, B, C, and D. You look at those dates. Some of those dates are concurrent, meaning you'll be doing much of the work together. For instance, B and C could be coming together because we're doing that collaboration. A survey is going to go out to your community. In terms of that, it all builds up to that phase there. What is personalized is this Board of Education determines what are those dates, and how long you want that search to be, how long you want it to be out. And we really work with you to establish those dates and hit those dates so it works in your need and make sure you hit that date. Some searches are three months, some are four months. You might say we want to name a superintendent by April. We'll build it around there. So those are dates, but lots of times they're running concurrent with each other. So as B and C are coming together, but ultimately it builds it up to Phase D. So as we look at this, in terms of this, David alluded to the fact is that we want to sit down and talk with the Board of Education. What are your priorities for your next leader? Really, really important to establish what those priorities, what that process looks like, and what you want for your next leader. David alluded to the fact that community is sitting down and having those forums. They could be on a Saturday, they could be on a Friday, it could be during the school day, institute day. Anything that works to engage those stakeholders, really, really important that we engage that. Ultimately, what that's going to do is develop a leadership profile. Ultimately, this Board of Education will approve that leadership profile. Not something that we're going to develop. It's going to be in collaboration with you, and you're going to develop that. So as we get to Phase C and D, which is kind of where you're getting to it, we'll talk a little bit later in some other slides about how we advertise, how we recruit. But ultimately, we want to get the job out there if we choose to be selected as your firm. In terms of that, then in terms of C and D, you'll be screening in candidates. And for us, we're going to screen every paper candidate. And for us, we don't do Zoom interviews. We actually do meet-to-meet. We're kind of done with the Zooms. We won't use that word that we went through. We'll leave it for another time or day. But the idea is interacting with a staff member who are potential candidates and meeting them in purpose is really important. So we get to learn about them, interview them. In terms of the background of candidates, we'll talk a little bit about what we recommend. Obviously, you do your traditional background, but obviously, in this day and age, in making sure you have the right candidate, there is an option, and we'll talk a little bit later on from there. And then we'll work with the Board of Education. Facilitation of this, do you need questions? We can provide those questions to you, work you through the process. Talk about what you should ask and what you can't ask legally behind there in terms of that. And then we either could be part of the process or not part of the process. That's why it's personalized. This Board of Education is going to say is, this is where we need you guys. School, does that connect? And this is where we don't need you. So it's really, really important. And then finally, hopefully, we get to that final part of, it's a finalist interviews. You'll do your standard reference checks. Some Boards of Education do a site visit. They want to see where that person works at in terms of that. All of this is confidential. That's what we would recommend. We would not recommend releasing names until you actually have your finalists, and you've gone through that process there, behind there. But obviously, when you get to your two finalists, is where you might be able to go ahead and announce that. But we also recommend doing a confidential search so we can get a robust group of candidates to want to come, to avoid them jeopardizing employment. So as we get to the next part, oh, I knew I was going to do that. Wrong button. Here's a little task plan. What I did in sequential order is put that through from 1 through 12. And what you as a Board of Education are going to say is, here are the things that the Board does. Here are some of the things that we do together. And here are some of the things that the consultants do. We're going to be able to pick and choose what you'd like out of that, and either be able to combine them, separate them, move them around in terms of this. But this kind of tells you where we're going in terms of that. It's really important to get everyone involved, community engagement, board approval. And everything is by board approval. We're going to come to your meetings. We're going to do it during open session. The only time that we're in closed session, when we're talking about candidates, and we're getting in that part. Other than that, we're going to be standing at this microphone, talking about the survey results, talking about the leadership profile. You'll go ahead and approve that leadership profile, and that will be out for the public. As we go on in terms of that, that board workshop, depending upon you have a long-standing Board of Education, like we've interviewed before, we don't need that support. You're going to tell us, this is what we need, this is what we don't need. And as we continue to go on, we get down to the second interviews. That's when the Board's really getting down to the final two finalists. You make your final decision, and then obviously, name that superintendent is what you're hoping to do in terms of that. But this task sheet, you'll be able to move some things around, decide what you want to add or delete from there. In terms of advertisement, the things that are free for us is Illinois Association of School Administrators. It's there. Illinois Association of Electoral Administrators, and also our School Exec Connect website, as well as LinkedIn there. You may choose to cast the wide net further. You may want to go ahead. But we also know that people in Wisconsin, Illinois, and Indiana, Ohio, they're looking to come across back and forth. But if you're looking to throw that web a little bit further out, that you want to do a national search, gave you some examples of what some national postings would be. But again, that's up to this Board of Education to determine how far you want to cast the net. So in your proposal, you've seen this before, the cost for the consulting fee is $19,500. We will not go over that amount. Expenses are not to exceed $1,900. You say, what is that? That might be buying binders, doing some travel expenses, might be if we need a separate room because we want to go ahead and interview candidates in a separate location. Out of that, because we don't do that within district. And then advertising costs is you deciding what you want. We're going to go with that. The last one is the third-party check. You'll do your regular check. You'll do a finger background check from there. A third-party check is done through a third party. Not only will they do criminal background check, they'll actually go ahead and look at a candidate's certifications, their education requirements, look at civil judgments, anything of nature. Also do a social media dive, looking for 14 risk factors, much more than us just kind of Googling a candidate's name. So we recommend that in this time and age to really go from there. But it's really up to the Board of Education of how far you want to go.
Okay. So we are unique, and one of the things that we're most proud of is the way that we're able to personalize the search and the support that we provide during the search. Also, as Kevin and I mentioned early on with our experience and the educational backgrounds, that of course will also aid within the search process as well. Every time I see this slide, I think of a loaf of bread or something, freshness guaranteed, right? So we were one of the first firms to come up with ways to demonstrate our confidence in what we do. I'll take you through several of these right now. If the first slate of candidates is not where you feel like the district needs to be with that selection, we will continue to bring in candidates until we find the candidate for you. In addition to that, within the first two years, if a superintendent that's selected is either dismissed or resigns, we will do an additional search with no additional fees. And then also at the conclusion of the first year, first couple of years, there was no way that we'll be looking at trying to recruit or have any kinds of discussions with the candidate that was selected, of course, as well. Before we open it up to questions, I did have a chance to take a look at the school report card and also your website. And a couple of things that really stood out were that all four schools were at a commendable status. So I congratulate you and your district on that. Also, just even looking at scores minimally, you're at state standard or above, and I took primarily a look at what would be ELA and mathematics. So I just would like to congratulate you on those, which are significant statistics. There's a lot on the school report card, right? But some good things obviously are happening. With that said, we would like to open it up with any questions that you might have for Kevin and I.
Okay. I just had, I had two questions. Hopefully, nothing too involved. One, I appreciate the fact that you all looked at the website and looked at our scores and everything else. So thank you very much for that. When you looked at our district compared to some of the other districts you've worked with, you know, were pretty small, they may be small, big, whatever, was there anything that stood out to you? And I realize that you have a lot more homework to do if you're engaged, so I would not expect a lot. But if there's anything, any insights that you have about us compared to your typical client, things that you'd be looking at considering?
So I would have to say is that your focus on inclusion and diversity is in the forefront of recognizing and recognizing all of your scholars here at the school is really, really important. I also know that you have a very, even though you're a smaller district, you're moving forward in terms of your technology, what you're looking to do, how you're going ahead and recruiting teachers in terms of that. And so you have a great reputation. I know that because I spent 10 years in a Proviso area, so I know your reputation in terms of how kids are matriculating, whether they want to go to, you know, Proviso Math and Science Academy, if they want to go back out to East in terms of West, and certainly different IB programs. So what stands about is that obviously, you're forward-thinking in terms of that. And just the beginning of your Board of Education meeting, with everything going on, the idea that we're still going to go ahead and focus on what our stakeholders need and what our scholars need, I think that's the most important part. But I think our discussions with you will drive that decision. Because for me to assume something, I would need to talk with each of the board members and your stakeholders. I'm going to come back and say, here's what your district is saying.
Fair. Thank you very much.
I'm just going to add quickly to that as well. I was fortunate to be next door in District 89, Melrose Park, and Broadview, and Maywood. And so, as I did look at the school report card, and I don't know the area as well. I actually taught in Berwyn, and I grew up in Berwyn, so I'm not too far from here. But I do know that there were some similarities in demographics, inclusion, equity, and some of the same challenges and some of the same good things that are happening. So just on a personal aspect, as Kevin and I are sifting through candidates, right, I have an innate feeling for some of that as well because I lived it for 10 years there. But I also, along with Kevin's background, also worked in East Aurora. I worked in West Aurora and Oswego. So I had some experience with similar needs. Now, those are on much larger scales, but when it comes down to it's like teaching. You know, if you really know how to teach well, you can do kindergarten, or you can do eighth grade, or you can do 12th grade. Districts, we're all doing kind of the same thing, or trying to do the same thing. We have certain different challenges and benefits, but we're all kind of doing. So it is nice to have some of that experience to help out as we go through the search.
Yes, thank you. What percentage of placed candidates are still in their position after two years?
That's a really great question in terms of that. For us, our success rate initially was 97% in terms of from there, in terms of where we're at with our candidates, being with the firm for the last five years. Over 90% are staying on to their second contract. Some are moving out because, again, family and circumstances behind there. Some are looking for different opportunities in person there, but usually, most get to that second district, and it's about 90%. But again, that is for different reasons why districts leave, right? And people leave districts. Changing a vision, changing an opportunity, those things do happen. Great question.
We're grateful for your time today. And as I think you know, we're going to be hearing from a few different presenters today. What is the thing you would want to leave with us as the takeaway that makes School Exec Connect truly the standout? What is your value proposition for us on that front?
On a personal note, I know all of your next presenters. I've worked closely with them. So I will not say anything ill will about them. What I will tell you is that we're not a large firm. We're a smaller firm. And I think what we try to do is personalize that. What we try to do is look at consultants that have a connection to a district and have some similarity versus that, versus there. And so when they asked us to come back out, we looked at, you know, does that attract me? Yes, I've worked in a district very similar. So for us, we try to connect our consultants with districts that are similar in terms of background, what we've done before in the past, and that's which school is that connects that stands us out versus just anyone wants to do the search. They look at our background, try to make us connection. So when we talk to Boards of Education, they're like, okay, you get it. You worked in a small district. You understand what the challenges are in a small district, and you understand what the greatness of small districts are. And that's what makes us different. And we try to connect those consultants that match your district. So that's what stands us out a little bit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have two questions, kind of related. So if hired, would you two be our consultants, or it would depend? How many consultants do you have?
It would be us two. David and I would be your consultants in terms of that. If we needed to bring in a third person, we can go to the bench, as they say. But obviously, we're bringing two consultants in terms of that. And the reason why is David has a great deal of HR background, and I have different backgrounds. So I call it a So I call the yin and yang approach. So you'll be working with us, you'll give us our main contact, you'll identify the representative that we work with, who's your main communicator, and then we'll identify that for us too. So you're not getting 77 emails and 47 phone calls and trying to establish. We are the consultants.
Okay. Second question is on your website, there's a list of senior associates and associates. How are they utilized?
We tap into all of our senior associates in terms of helping us recruit candidates. So they might be working as adjunct professors, working in the field, they may have cross-upfront people. So we tap on all of our regular associates, as well as our senior associates. They help build our model. We sit down and talk with those senior associates. Dr. Tim Schimpf, I just did a search with him. So sometimes they match us with senior associates. So as we continue to build our repertoire, we can work with them. But we're tapping to everyone in the firm to kind of group candidates out there. They may be teaching a class, doing a PD class, came across someone who's gone involved. And so their networking is really important as senior associates.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, NLCU at Culvers for the PTO.
All right. Next, we have Educational Leadership Solutions. Yep, they'll be in in a minute, sorry. Momentary pause.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, welcome.
First of all, on behalf of Educational Leadership Solutions, thank you for having us tonight.
Can I ask one favor? Can you make sure to speak into the mic because we're recording the meeting? That way, people can hear. Thank you.
We appreciate knowing that, and we'll be more than glad to accommodate. So my name is Gary Zabilk. I am one of the partners with EDLS. And I could share with you my background a little bit, and I'll have my colleagues introduce themselves as well. I'm a retired superintendent. I was superintendent for 13 years. Short stint in Downers Grove by design. I'll just leave it at that. And when you say a short stint as superintendent, that doesn't, sometimes raises some flags. Then I was in Morton Grove for about 10 years as superintendent and retired from Morton Grove. Since then, I was a field service director for the Illinois Association of School Administrators, and I served as a field service director. My role there was to coach and mentor brand-new superintendents. And I did that for about the last 12 years. I mention those things just because it provides some background as to why am I still interested in doing these roles and why are we good at doing these roles? Because we have a lot of contacts, a lot of experiences in working with superintendents. Personally, I've been involved in over 50 executive searches and have a very good track record, I may say. And that just tells you a little bit about myself as well. With that, I'd like to introduce Dr. Lubefeld.
Thank you, Gary. Good evening, everybody. It is wonderful to meet you. My name is Mike Lubefeld. I'm the superintendent of schools at North Shore School District 112 in Highland Park and Highwood, Illinois. Been a superintendent for 16 years. Prior to that, I was in Deerfield, where my wife and I raise our two kids. And prior to that, I was just up north of you all in Pinoyar, up on Cumberland and Foster. So the superintendency is really a gift. This is my 16th and final year. I'm retiring. I shouldn't say that with such glee, but I know I'm on tape. Yeah, I'm going to miss everyone, I miss the board. In the, over the years, I've been blessed with opportunity and support from my own school boards to help co-direct the Illinois Aspiring Superintendent Academy and a number of aspiring superintendent academies for the American Association of School Administrators. Proudly and humbly, one out of six Illinois superintendents today in the entire state went through our academy. It is going to have its 11th year this coming June. Very proud of that. Humbled by awards and acknowledgements, really on behalf of school board, students, teachers, parents. I work in wonderful places that allow me to do really cool things, and I appreciate it. Hablo español, estudié hace muchos años en Cuernavaca en México. So I speak Spanish. I learned many years ago in Cuernavaca, and it's been wonderful to be bicultural, belligerent, and it's been helpful. So with that, it is my honor to introduce Dr. Karen Matoro.
Hi, everybody. I first have to say I am from this area. I went to St. Vincent's in River Forest, yay! And Trinity High School, for those of you who don't know, an all-girls high school right here. Thank you. You're all nodding, I appreciate that. Been out on Madison Street a little bit too many times, as I'd like to admit, but it was great coming today, coming from the north suburbs. I spent the day with my sister and my nieces. Yay, Forest Park. Anyway, I just retired in May, was a teacher, principal, instructional coach, and my last job was an assistant superintendent of innovation. Very proud of the fact that my dissertation was on joy in the classroom, because I'm all about joy, and where is it, and how do we find it? And so part of what my goal is, is to make sure we find people who bring joy into our school districts, into our classrooms. That's what it's all about. If you can't be joyful in a school, then there is a problem. So I, it's nice to meet all of you. Thank you for the warm welcome, and we're going to continue on.
So with that, I am pleased to have both Mike and Karen as our associates because they do represent what they've just shared, and that is people, people who really know, understand, and can relate to people in such a ways as to help make them good fits. You're going to be actually seeing three firms tonight. You've seen one already, you'll see this one, and then you'll see another firm. But one of the things that we think set us apart is the fact that we can personalize things for you to make it fit best for you here at Forest Park. As a firm, we have only been around five years. I mentioned that I have done 50 searches. I worked with one of our competitors, if you will, and left because I felt we had a better way of doing things. And as such, that's what we hope to share with you today. In addition to doing searches, we also do strategic planning for school districts. And we know from your district's strategic plan that you've been invested in that as well and know the value of that. We also do that work with school districts, too. However, moving forward, the search process, as we see it, basically breaks down to three major phases, okay? And again, this is our process. However, we can customize our process for you in ways that fit best for you as board members, fit your schedules and so on. We've got suggestions, we know the market, we know the field. Yet as such, you've got to work within your realms as well. We realize that as board members, you've got a lot of commitments that you have to fulfill, and we have seen the salary schedule lately for board members, and it hasn't gone up in a number of years. You know, that being the case, we work best in trying to accommodate you, working for you, and more importantly, most importantly, serving you as your search firm. As such, a big part of our search firm is breaking it down into these three phases. We've got a leadership profile, the recruitment piece, and then the interviewing stage, which I'm actually going to turn it now over to Mike to talk about, the leadership profile as a starter.
All right, thank you, Gary. So what's kind of cool is that the leadership profile is developed by you and your community. It is not something we come in with and say, "Here's the leadership profile of your new superintendent." That's not how this works. And we don't come in and say, "Well, we've got all this experience, so here's our leadership profile." That's not how it works. We say, "Who are you? What do you want? What does your community want? What are the characteristics that you're seeking in your superintendent?" And we work with you to make sure that the entire process is looking to find whomever that person is. We don't come in with a staple of people saying, "Okay, we'll just see how they fit." That's not how we operate. What we do is we start with you. We talk about the timelines, details of search. We can give you advice and consult with you and for you. It's your district, it's your community, your search. If you want to do it in two weeks, we'll say, "Okay." No, we won't, because it's too soon. But you know what I'm saying. If you want to do it in three years, we'll say, "Well, let's, you know, tighten it up." You know what I'm saying. We want your input, and we can talk with you. How have we gotten stakeholder input from teachers, from educational support staff, from parents, from businesses, from students? And we talk with you about various ways to do that so we can help tailor the leadership profile for you, so you know what you're doing. Nowadays, we're very happy to come in person and do focus groups. If you'd like us to do that, we can do them electronically. We like to do it in person. But again, that's what we do, knowing you and knowing your style and what you're looking for. When we collect the data, we ask questions. We take your input and the questions you want. We work with questions that we've used and ways to phrase it, and we work together. And it's an iterative process that goes forward, backwards, and is customized. What we do is when we collect the data, and we can send a letter, we can do a postcard, we can do an email, we can do it in person, we can have a QR code up at your board meeting, all of the above, go to the schools, go to the parent teachers associations, go to your committees, and whatever it is, we'll set that up with you to get that information. The results from the interviews and focus groups and surveys, however we get the input from you and with you, it's compiled, and then with that, we tailor the leadership profile for you. The leadership profile is what the candidates are looking for. When people are looking to become a superintendent, one of the first things they want to do, they go to the school report card, they study, they look at board minutes, you know, all that kind of stuff, do the homework and look at the community. But then they look at that leadership profile to say, "Is this a school board that I think I fit with as a candidate?" We help you through that process. Anything else, Gary? Okay, okay. Oh, what did I just do here? All right, here we go. First time using a clicker, sorry. Now, we don't know who your superintendent's going to be. So we work with the Illinois Association of School Administrators Job Bank here in Illinois and in Wisconsin, Iowa, Missouri, Indiana, Kentucky, like the neighbors. We go to that job bank when we're looking for the job. You know what I'm saying? So that's where we go, we do that. We also advertise on our own website, candidates looking for superintendents, go to all the search firms to see what's going on, you know, what do they know? We also may know sitting superintendents or aspiring superintendents from a variety of our work and our connections who might want a superintendency in a near suburb, you know, and things of that nature. So we, we're active there. We have an application, there's also a personal assessment. The process is confidential, the selection process is public. Who you select, how you do it, how we collect information, we get the leadership, that's all public. We want the public involvement, all that. Who the people are applying is confidential because in Illinois, we have found that if people are current superintendents or even current assistant superintendents, it is easier for them to look for a job without their current employer knowing, just to be really blunt, really candid. And that allows for a wider net to be cast, you know? So we don't talk about who it is and all that kind of thing. You've got an online application process, very standard. We have an assessment process, we've got, you know, we've got some data people, you know, who know how to process that information. If you've got particularly specific, unique or distinctive questions, we can add that to the process. It's very normal. If you want someone that speaks Spanish, you know, Spanish preferred. If you want someone who's, you know, has a proven record in this, that, and the other, we can do that. Ask the question. And then, yeah, and then there's a number of different layers of interviews. Based on all the criteria that we set for, that you define, that we do together, we then hold what we call screening interviews from people who look like from the initial stages that they'll meet your criteria. Go through whatever, handful, you know, we tell you the numbers and all that. At some point, we will bring you what we call a slate. You never really, you know, lock in a number, but it could be three to six people, you know, something like that. We bring you a slate, then we narrow it down, and we'll go through all that kind of things. We're encouraged by the market right now. There's like 70 to 90 new superintendents or superintendents new to their post in Illinois every year. Illinois has about 852 school districts. Again, I've been heavily involved in this for the last decade in the aspiring superintendent world. There's great people out there. Who is going to fit with you? Who is going to serve you and your community? And who's going to advance the criteria that you and your community set forth in the leadership profile? And it's exciting, it's exhausting, it's overwhelming, it's unnerving, it's anxiety-provoking, and it's worthwhile for the kids in your community.
Okay, so you've heard about the leadership profile piece of it. You've heard about the application process and the vetting pieces. Once that slate is presented to you as the board, okay? This is where we hand the process over to you as the board. However, we partner with you in that to whatever extent you'd like us to. So for example, you have a leadership profile which will have been, you know, recognized and acknowledged by the board as to this is what we're looking for in our next superintendent. We actually generate questions related to that profile. So if you're looking at someone who has a lot of leadership abilities in curriculum and instruction, for example, that's something that we will provide questions for you about. Not that you can't come up with your own questions, we totally believe that you can. But that's one way that we can support you is by coming up with these questions. Now, if you take a look at the pictures on the slide, and you've got, you've got the screen here as well. One of the things that we do that's different than any other company, if the board should so choose, and that is if you're a technology-oriented board, that once you interview these slate of candidates that have been presented to you, at the end of each interview, if you'd like to rate each of the candidates as to how they rated in the different areas of leadership that were identified. So for example, this is just, just an example, but someone who's focused on student-centered learning, someone who's a good communicator, someone who you agree with our philosophical approach. While you interview them, you could go ahead and on a device, we sent you a tool to use, you just go ahead and put your rating, and although it's not in real time, it's shortly thereafter, we actually can create what's called one of these diagrams for you that you can take a look at. All of these lines represent a different candidate. So you can see we've got one, two, one, two, three, four candidates identified here. And actually, there are six candidates, but you can see the different lines, and obviously the outer rims of those are those candidates that fared well. This is the data approach that, again, is an option for you as boards. There are many boards that say, "You know what? We like to just talk to people, we could take our own notes and operate that way." This is something, it doesn't cost any extra, it's just a service that we can provide. If you chose to, we could do this for you as well. We also then have a plus delta chart that you can also, what are the things that we liked about this candidate? What are the things that shows us that they may not be the best fit? And that we also then consolidate for you and give that back to you in a relatively short period of time. So you have some data right in front of you to be able to help you make those decisions. So that's an opportunity that we have for you to be able to do that. In addition to that, and the rating of the candidates, we also then encourage the boards. Once you have interviewed that slate of candidates, you will have typically a slate of candidates is about six candidates that you would have, six finalists for your position. Once the board interviews them, and you do that yourselves in closed session, again, with our support to whatever extent you'd like us there, then you pick the top two or three candidates that you'd like to move forward. It's at that point, remember we talked about transparency, but also confidentiality? It's at that time that we work with the board to identify what we call a stakeholders group to also interview those candidates. We actually have them sign a confidentiality statement. But this group is typically made up of some of your Forest Park staff members, some of your community members, if you so choose, some of your parents, et cetera. Typically, no more than about 12 to 15 people total, and we work with them. We have that same process where they can also rate the candidates, or we've got other protocols that they can use if, again, choose not to use the data piece of it as we offer it. Again, we provide the option for you to decide how best to do that. But nonetheless, you get the input from the stakeholders group. They're not telling you who they want for their next superintendent, they're simply providing you with input. And we've got it geared that way because it needs to be the board's decision as to who you hire. Once you have the input, what they like about candidates, as far as how well they fit the district, as well as what they don't think will help them fit in the district as well as they should, that information then goes to the board as you have your final interviews so that you can then make the best selection with the input of those people individually, but... people individually, but collectively as a group, you know, as well. We do that all at one false swoop, if you will, with one stakeholder committee group of approximately twelve to fifteen people. By the way, should have said this earlier, if any of you have any questions while we're talking, feel free to ask us and I know you're more than welcome, of course, to ask us at the end, but if you have any questions, you know, along the way, uh, we also would have invited them and still do invite those if you, if you do have any. So that's one of the ways to help boards then come to consensus on their candidates. So with that, the board will have that input, they'll have their final interview and then it's time for them to decide which of those two or three finalists will be their next superintendent. So then we also work alongside of you to talk about, uh, contracts, what they typically look like. Um, we also talk with you about, uh, salary ranges for your next superintendent. We've got data on what the market is showing right now, uh, we'll know, um, approximately what candidates have made in their previous roles and we pull all those pieces together to help the board make the best informed decision that they can because going through this process isn't beneficial unless, excuse me for putting it this way, you seal the deal and you're able to hire the person, uh, at, at a point that everyone is very happy, uh, with the resolution that you've come up with. We'll work with your school attorney at that point or actually work with you as you work with your school attorney in doing that. Then one other piece is that we do offer coaching and mentoring for whoever that candidate is. So even though the search process may be finished, you may have hired your next superintendent, but we are still there to coach and mentor them for one year afterwards and we're more than glad to do that. You've got experienced school leaders here that know every realm of the school business and we can provide that support as well.
How, do a lot of the candidates you place take you, take you up on the coaching and mentoring?
That's a great question and I would say probably about seventy-five percent of them. Yep, only seventy-five percent because some of the districts have their own built-in mentoring, uh, plan for them somehow, some way. They either had a previous superintendent and/or someone that the district is familiar with that they suggest. Also, the Illinois Association of School Administrators, whom I've worked for for a number of years, uh, we also provide mentoring that's somewhat what I did and if I provide it, then they may say, we're gonna work with Gary versus somebody else. So, but nonetheless, we feel it's a worthwhile service to provide because sometimes candidates aren't sure, some will take advantage of two mentors. So that's, you know, not out of the realm either. Well, then I'm gonna turn it over to Karen to just summarize some of these notes that we've talked about.
So, you know, as I think back of all the searches I was on as an assistant superintendent or an administrator, it's so important to tie it to what you need and what you want here in Forest Park. So even though we have a system in place, it's totally customizable, right? So I think that's so important to remember, like, we like this about your system, but we really want to customize it this way, so it's important to bring a system, but then to know it's customizable. Also, I think it's really important to remember, it's a confidential process, but it's totally transparent. So confidential, so we get more of the people who we want to get, they can, you know, we can recruit them, all of that, but it's totally transparent. And then again, aligning what you need, what the data says we need, we want, to those candidates. So actually looking for, we, we, we're just talking about, there's a lot of great leaders out there, but they might not be leaders for this spot, for what you're looking for. So I think that's just really, really important to remember. And the most important thing to remember is who your team is going to be. It's gonna be, I was gonna say the Three Stooges, but I'm not. Um, but, I'm sorry, the three of us here, um, I know, sorry, um, lightening up the mood here. Um, but we will be the team that is with you, helping you through all the processes and all of that. So, um, Gary's gonna talk a little bit, continue on.
And we're gonna be wrapping things up. So you do see, we do have a sense of humor. We love the work that we do and, uh, we try to, uh, help you enjoy it as well. This is a very important task for you, it's probably the most important task you will deal with as a board together. Yet at the same time, sometimes we need to take a step back, take a breath, and, and move forward in that regard. The last couple of things that we have, so this is the price, uh, for our search and, uh, that's pretty much all inclusive. That includes the advertising that we had talked about. Uh, you may notice, we did not talk about, uh, national advertising, okay? That is something that we could do. Uh, I will tell you, and I think Karen and Mike would agree, we've got enough capacity here in the state of Illinois and even our surrounding states that we reach, that we don't feel that it's money well-spent necessarily to do a national search. I mean, if you get people applying from Alaska or, um, you know, Florida or somewhere very far away, how well are they going to know how Illinois operates as a school district? How well are they going to know Forest Park? And even people from around the state won't know that much about Forest Park, but they'll know a lot about Illinois and Illinois financing and some of the other, uh, unique qualities that we have here in Illinois or, or challenges that we have here in Illinois. So all of those things. Um, our expenses typically are just our travel expenses, okay? Most of the rest of the stuff is, uh, all-inclusive, it is all-inclusive. So that's the price that, that you would see. Uh, we've talked about the mentoring and coaching already and then finally, we're also committed to excellence. If you were to find after having gone through the process, that we did not find a candidate that was that ideal candidate that you would like to see here in Forest Park, uh, we'll actually continue to look and find quality candidates for you. Okay, so, so that's one of the things that we're committed to excellence, we're committed to satisfying you as our clients. So the other piece is, um, is that any candidate who accepts a job, uh, we, we are hands-off for two years and when I say we're, we're hands-off, what that means is that there are firms that will or potentially can recruit people away from districts and with that, we, we don't do that. Um, we, I, I'm, I'm sorry, that's, I, I got my two, two different things mixed up here. Um, that they've gotta complete at least two years before, um, i- if they don't complete the two years, then we'll do another search for you. I'm sorry, that's, that's where I mixed up. The other piece has to do with, um, uh, their contract and that is, we will not recruit your candidate unless they're, um, unless their contract is about to expire and it's not being renewed. Okay, so, uh, I think that's, uh, that's relatively fair. So that's all we have. I hope we didn't talk too long. With that, we're more than glad to entertain any questions that you have.
So just one right off the bat, as you were preparing for tonight's presentation and looking at the, our district and thinking about us compared to your other, the other clients you have, is there anything that stood out to you about us that you would be, you know, in front of your, that you would have sort of front of mind dealing with us versus somebody else you might have dealt with?
You wanna go first?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So what's kinda neat about a school district with about seven hundred students and four schools is we may not be looking for somebody who's been in a twenty-five school, school district because the nuances of, of running a smaller, more intimate setting where you probably know the names of all the teachers and you're probably gonna be in the schools a little bit more than a more, what I'll call corporate superintendent, we want to make sure that we do that fitting. So that is definitely something we talked about. We, we pour over the Illinois school report card, student achievement, the growth, the metrics, the, the demographics, all of that, very typical, very normal, you know, very good wide berth. The, the big one that stood out for me was, we've got a nice, small school district, a nice tight-knit community, we've got someone that, that they're going to want predicting you're going to want, who's out there, who's there, who isn't behind a desk or behind some sort of corporate, uh, structure.
Okay.
I, no, I, well, I just, oh, sorry. I said for, when we were talking about it today before we met here, just the diversity of the neighborhoods, how it, um, we said we like the small size of it, you know, that's really important, who is running your district. It sets the tone, the culture, the climate. And I think what's nice is your, um, that your stakeholders will have a say in that and making sure that it's a great match. So like you were saying with the, we looked at the report card and the size, I, um, I guess, and where you are located, just, you know, in between other school districts that are all very tight-knit, River Forest, Oak Park, all of the areas, like, where does your superintendent fit in with that, with those colleagues and how will they work together and collaborate? That's what I think about being from this area.
And finally, I'll just say, I was a superintendent of a district of eight hundred, that's where I spent most of my career. And as such, you are the mayor of the school district and you work very closely with other village officials, if we can call them that. You are get, you're one that needs to be out and about that you get to know everybody, families, students, um, parents and community members, all. It's very different than when you're in a large system. Finding someone who is comfortable with doing those things is, uh, one of the things that we think would come up in conversations, looking for that leadership profile, but it's one of those things that's also very unique to smaller districts, is that, that close, close-up and personal approach of working with you as board members and everybody else who lives in this, in this district. So, sorry.
Uh, when you were going over the board interviews, with the diagram and the other chart, um, 'cause I'm assuming there's gonna be more than one round, how quickly, like if we plug in an information, you said fairly quickly, but how quickly does that turn around?
That question could vary from two hours, okay, to twelve hours depending upon the time of night that you finish. 'Cause sometimes you're doing this work in the evening and if interviews should end at ten o'clock, we're not saying we'll have it for you at midnight because it may not be valuable, it would be in your inboxes by the time you wake up. So, so, yeah, yeah, very good.
So you said you've been working, started this firm five years ago, correct?
Yes.
Um, have you worked with any of our surrounding school districts and, uh, understanding the demographics of what their districts are versus what our demographics are?
Yep, not currently. The closest one that we have worked with is, was, um, Lockport, okay? Lockport is a smaller district and they have about thirteen hundred students. Um, I have done, I did the last Poneier search, uh, which is also here in West Cook, but that's been, uh, a few years ago and actually wasn't part of our firm, I was part of the other firm. Uh, I've done a number of other West Cook searches, but again, not under our guise. Um, as a firm, in the five years we've been active, we've done about twenty-five searches and of those twenty-five, probably, um, eight to ten of them are superintendent searches and they're from all over the suburban areas. Yeah. The others are other key administrators for those districts. Yeah.
Okay. Um, in case I missed it, do you guys do background check? And what does that entail?
Absolutely. Uh, boy, especially in light of, we've actually talked about this recently, as you hear about some situations about even being citizens or not and I realize that, um, you know, it's a conversation that sometimes is difficult, but at the same time, we've even talked about asking, um, our finalists and/or even before that stage, about completing I-9 forms, which is, uh, an immigration form that typically, um, is a way of demonstrating that one is a citizen, provided the truth be told on those. However, even before that piece of it, um, the Googling, the vet, the vetting, the reference checking on these candidates, uh, that's something that we do. We also go beyond the listed references because listed references are people typically that these people know. We try to go beyond that and with our vast knowledge of school administrators, uh, throughout the suburban area and the state and even out of state, in, in Mike's case, he knows people almost everywhere, um, we have avenues to tap into people who may know these people from other sources. So we check on those pieces. Now, we also do provide and, um, we don't list it here because it's something that actually not many districts take us up on it. As a district, when you hire someone, you typically fingerprint them as a district and you do the national, uh, what we call the FBI search, uh, on those people you choose to hire. Um, there is a service that we are connected with that, and I'll tell you offhand, the price is fourteen hundred dollars, but they do an in-depth search on these candidates if you should choose to utilize that. And in-depth means you look at their social media profiles, you look at their financial backgrounds and profiles. It's very, some would say invasive, yet at the same time, as a hiring entity of your leader, uh, who will be drawing a decent salary, it's not out of the realm for districts to do that, it just comes at a little bit of a price. We coordinate that for you, um, and will charge you for it, but it's just a, a flow-through. You pay us and we pay them, uh, for that extensive background check. But again, they're the ones that go, they dig deep into the, um, especially the, the social media profiles.
Does that include criminal background check, credit checks, all that stuff?
Yes, I'm sorry, I, those were the, those are the most common ones, it's the, uh, other ones that are more unique that, that I highlighted, my apologies.
Thank you.
Yep, good, good question.
Um, one more, um, 'cause I have the same one for everyone. Um, if hired, are you three, would you three be our consultants?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely, yes.
Just asking, and then on your website, you have, um, associates, um, how are they utilized and do you utilize all of them or is it just one or two?
Actually, you're hiring us as your project team, should we be so fortunate to, um, to gain your approval. However, all of our associates work with us when we get a search. We let them know, especially once we have that leadership profile, that we're doing a search for Forest Park, do you know of any good candidates and they are located throughout the state? And therefore, they are continually on call for us to help us look at, recruit and consider , uh, other candidates beyond just those who might be local. So we utilize them. We've got, um, about ten across the state.
Thank you. Uh, I saw here, um, you offer free mentoring for selected, uh, superintendents, but you had said, uh, only about seventy-five percent return for the mentoring?
Yes, that choose to take the mentoring. Yeah, yeah. So, um, and again, it's just a personal choice. Everyone finds someone to mentor. Oftentimes, superintendents and, you know, we are all school leaders, we know the people who've kind of led us to these positions, oftentimes we seek to continue to work with those people. We just say as a firm, uh, that we believe in the mentoring process and therefore, you know, I've actually had a school board write to us and say, please mentor our superintendent, um, which we'd like it to come from the superintendent that they'd like to have the mentor, but if it doesn't happen that way, sometimes it happens, you know, through the board that they, you know, say, we're not so sure, our, our superintendent's being mentored as you offer, uh, could you connect with them and do more mentoring? And we have. We also have an excellent track record, by the way, didn't mention that, but people that we have placed, actually in the five years, they're all still in their positions. Um, so to that, to that extent, yes, whatever, safe to knock on.
Really quick, you said as you left your current, or your prior position, you felt like you had a better, uh, mousetrap. Um, what do you want to leave this board with as that differentiating factor out of all the other presentations that we're hearing tonight?
I would say first of all, the fact that we truly look at that leadership profile, we look at the data pieces and we make those pieces available. We don't have, as Mike mentioned, we don't have a, a stable of candidates. We know who people who are out there who are looking for jobs. Uh, there are those that, well, they didn't get that job, let's bring them in for this job. It, it's not a job factory in that regard, we don't view it that way. Uh, we actually, every search is a brand-new opportunity, it's a clean slate. Um, not to say that we may not know who some of those people are, but don't come to us and, and say, well, I didn't get that job, can I, you know, put in for this job? Well, they could put in, but, um, it's all about the profile. Are they best for Forest Park? We've got your best interest at heart, uh, more so than the candidate's best interest at heart and we're not so sure all the firms feel that same way. And you see that by turnover, I'll just be blunt.
Thank you guys for coming up. Guys and ladies.
It's been our pleasure, it's been nice to be here with you. Thanks for giving us the time that you did. We hope we didn't overextend our welcome.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Great. Next, we're going to hear from Illinois Association of School Boards. And then during your presentation, if you can make sure to speak into the mic, because this is recorded to be posted later.
And I just pressed the forward button on the.
I think so, I don't know how to use the.
Okay, great. All right. All right, is that good? All right. Well, good evening, thanks for having me, I appreciate it. My name is Al Mulby, and I'm with the Illinois Association of School Boards. And so, glad to have the opportunity to meet with you tonight and talk about your superintendent search. Just a little bit about myself. I've been with IASB for eleven years now, working out of the Lombard Office primarily, working primarily in the Executive Search Division. I'm a retired superintendent, as all these other guys are that were in here before me. I was actually superintendent in Hillside ninety-three for fifteen years. And I'd been the principal there before that. I'd been assistant superintendent in the Mannheim School District area. I was a teacher in Hillside even prior to that. And I started my teaching career and coaching career in Iowa. So I retired eleven years ago. And actually, one of the other presenters replaced me at Hillside and followed me. And so I've been doing this for the past eleven years, working primarily in the northern part of the state and the suburban area. We've got in our division, the Executive Search Division for IASB, we have, right now, we have eight consultants. And we have an office in Springfield. And six of our consultants work out of there, and then two of us work out of the Lombard Office. We pretty much work together, but we kind of divide up in, as far as geographically. My colleague, Dr. Carmen Ayala, who, former state superintendent, she was going to be here with me tonight, but she's actually at another district. So she and I handle pretty much most of the searches in the northern part of the state and the suburban areas. So it's a little bit about myself as far as the association. In addition to doing this, I also work with the West Forty Regional Office. I do health, life, safety visits. So I'm going to be in your buildings in about two weeks, I think it is. Is that right? So I can walk around now if you like, and you know, that way save time. But, but actually, most of my, most of my retired time is spent working with the School Board Association doing superintendent searches. So I'm glad to have a chance to talk to you tonight about, about our process. IASB, of which obviously you are a member, has a variety of divisions. Executive Searches is just one of our divisions. And we do searches for districts throughout the state. We only serve districts in Illinois, but we attract candidates from all across the country. We also have been doing this as long, if not longer, than any of the other for-profit firms that have been doing it. And there'll be some information on one of my slides that'll kind of talk about that. So in addition to superintendent searches, we also work with boards in finding business managers, assistant superintendents, principals. We work as special ed co-ops in finding executive directors. So we do a variety of different administrative searches. But for the most part, I, our main focus is on superintendent searches. So that's what I'll be talking about tonight. In my folder that I gave you, there's a variety of documents, but there's also copies of the, of the PowerPoint. You may also have already have that as well. But I'll just kind of go through that, and then hopefully answer any questions you might have about how, how I could be of assistance to you in your superintendent search. We are the market leader in Illinois. We have a very strong national presence. And even though we only serve districts in Illinois, we attract candidates from across the country. We have found that when administrators from other states are looking to relocate in Illinois, the first place that they look is on our website for vacancies, for job postings. And so we, we attract candidates from across the country. We've been doing it for sixty years, and we've got consultants, all of our consultants together. We have over three hundred years of educational experience, which just means that we're really old. Because if you add it all together, it gives you over three hundred years. Our network is really strong. We, we are part of a national superintendent searchers organization. And there's a brochure in the folder for you on the left side called NAS, National Affiliation of Superintendent Searches. There's forty states out of the fifty that make up this organization. We are basically subdivisions of the state school board associations in these forty states. And so we work together. When we have a vacancy, we post it through NAS. And so it gets posted, gets posted in the other forty states that are part of this organization. We also are able to share information about candidates. And so we cast a very, very wide net as far as the, the search process. Obviously, you as a board know that your main job is to employ the superintendent. And that's stated in a variety of different places, but the foundational principles of effective governance, that's IASB's bylaws, basically. Says that that's your bylaw, that's your main job. We're the only organization whose main goal is to serve school boards. And that's why I mentioned that we have other divisions as well that you can work with, that work with you, field service, legal, policy, a variety of different divisions that work with you as a board to make you a stronger district. And Executive Searches is just one of those. We aren't a head-hunting service. We provide that service and provide you your next best leader, but that's not our, that's not our sole focus. We do attract and we recruit diverse top-quality candidates from across the country through a variety of different organizations as well. In addition to NAS that I made reference to, the national organization, we're very active in all these different organizations that you see on the screen as far as networking to find candidates. We conduct aspiring superintendent workshops in the fall and in the spring, where we're able to get candidates who are on that next step, ready to become superintendents. And we help them through this, this part of the process, the interviewing, the application, and so on. Again, we have a very robust network that's nationwide through these different groups. And in addition, when we have a vacancy, we have about seven thousand recipients of our postings through a mass email through Higher Logic. And so when, when we have a search, the word gets out there very extensively that we're working with you as a district. As I made reference to the out-of-state candidates, this is a graph, a little hard to see, but you can see percentage-wise the number of out-of-state candidates who have applied for positions in Illinois that we have worked with those districts. As far as the process itself, the components that make up the search, kind of give you a quick step-by-step as far as what you're getting when you, when you choose to hire us. You'll have, obviously, your consultants, which would be myself, and most likely Dr. Ayala as the co-facilitator. And we would be there for you for as many meetings as you need to come to, for as much communication primarily with the president. It's usually with the president or a liaison that we would work with. We would clarify the search components and articulate a more specific timeline for you, should you choose to hire us. The first step, obviously, is to put together a profile of what you're looking for in your next superintendent. And so we do that through a couple of different ways. One is to administer surveys, an online survey, to your stakeholders. Usually it goes to parents, community members, staff members. It can go to students if you wish, and to board members. And that gathers information for us on what the ideal characteristics that you're looking for in your next superintendent, and specifics such as maybe experience that you want required, whether that be superintendent experience, district level, office experience, principalship, and so on. So that's one of the first steps, is to collect information through those surveys. I also have a specific, a board-specific survey that I would send out to you as well to give, where you would get me more information about you as an individual board member are looking for in, in your next superintendent. And all of this will go together into, into the announcement of vacancy. One of the optional pieces that not all boards choose to do, and so we don't include it in our, in our complete basic package, and that would be to conduct focus groups where we would hold, myself and another consultant if need be, would come out and, and hold focus group meetings with staff, with parents, usually in the late afternoon and evening, or during the day, to get additional input. What we're finding is that not all boards really want this piece because they're finding that the survey is sufficient as far as gathering input from their stakeholders. That survey not only identifies characteristics that you're looking for and experience, but also you can have an open, open comment section to that survey, should you wish, where your stakeholders can respond to some questions about the search and characteristics and so on in a narrative form. I always tell boards, you have to be careful what you ask for if you want to have an open comment piece, because sometimes, we all know that it can be used just as a forum to, you know, to complain. And so that defeats the purpose, that doesn't help the process. So if you choose not to have the open comment section, that's certainly a choice, too. Should you want to do a focus group, that would be an optional piece. During this whole initial time, we're identifying the ideal candidate profile, developing an announcement of vacancy, which is a brochure that gets posted PDF form and linked to all the different sites that we use to advertise the position. That vacant, announcement of vacancy not only includes feedback that's been gleaned from these surveys, but also it has demographic information, it has financial information, programmatic information about your district and about your schools. And it's a way to really promote yourselves to potential candidates. During this time, we collect applications in an online application system. We verify qualifications and licensure. We do not want to bring you candidates to interview who do not have current Illinois licensure. I think that's a key. If somebody is close to it, and they say, oh, I'm going to have it by June. Well, on June thirtieth, you know, when, when you're ready for July first, your new superintendent, they have to have Illinois licensure. And so we, we make sure that they have current Illinois licensure in addition to all the other qualifications being met as we analyze the applications. What we usually do, we take the pool of applicants, and I say, we, it would be myself and Dr. Ayala, who would also then read all the applications. We do it independent of each other, and then we come up with our top tier of candidates independently and kind of, you know, compare notes and decide who we see as in that top tier of maybe ten to twelve candidates that we want to conduct screening interviews of. So we do that via Zoom, myself and my colleague. And each of the individual candidates, about a half hour each, for the screening interviews, we talk to them about a variety of general things as far as trying to assess their potential for being Forest Park's next superintendent. We narrow that down through those screening interviews. We narrow it down to a slate. We verify references of those that we have narrowed it down to. We contact their current employers, we talk to their current superintendents, their boards, whoever it may be. And we conduct a limited background inquiry through this. We don't conduct a background check, by law, we're not allowed to. But we also can give you information, and there's information in your packet about a third party that is a company that does this. And they actually do it for IASB. They did it for all of our employees, and we feel very confident in their work for you as a board. But we conduct the inquiries where myself and Carmen would talk to prior superintendents who have, who know these people. The fact that we've all been superintendents, we know a lot of people around the state as far as superintendents and board members and so on. Dr. Ayala, obviously, she was state superintendent, so she knows a lot of people, a lot more people than I do. And so we're, we're good reference checkers in that respect as far as background inquiries. And we finalize the slate of candidates to bring to you. Generally, boards want to interview a slate of about six. We usually find that's most successful for you. We can bring you anywhere from five to seven of the top candidates that we have filtered out of that group of ten or twelve that we've conducted screening interviews of. We also provide you with some interview preparations, some sample questions, some protocols, scheduling. We do the scheduling of those candidates, so you don't have to worry about scheduling the interviews once you've identified when you're going to be doing this. One of the optional pieces that you, that you can choose, and again, not all boards do, so we don't put it as part of the basic package. And that would be for stakeholder interviews with those semifinalists that generally have been narrowed down from that slate of six to probably two. Two semifinalists that you find as a board are maybe your top two choices. And at that point, then if you want to, if you choose to, include more people, staff, stakeholders, whomever in the interviewing process of those two finalists, we can come in and help facilitate that if you choose. Sometimes boards are just very confident in terms of narrowing down that slate of six to possibly two, and you want to have them back for your final interviews and do it yourselves. And that's certainly up to you, and some boards find a lot of success in doing it that way. Other boards feel it's important to involve stakeholders in some piece of the interviewing steps. We don't encourage you to do it at the beginning with your slate of six. We encourage that to be just the board doing those interviews. The more people you involve, the more everybody's going to like somebody, and it's hard to come up with consensus. And so those initial interviews should just be you as a board, our recommendation. And then narrow that down to possibly two semifinalists. And if you choose to broaden the interviewing step at that point, you know, we can work with you on how to involve stakeholders. And if you want, we can come in and conduct, I would come in and conduct interviews with those stakeholders and the two finalists, and you would then do the final interviews as a board as well. Also, part of the process after you've made your selection is a post-search workshop with the field service director for, for this area. And that would be, you know, no cost, it's, it's included in the process, and it's a significant piece. We don't just leave you once the contract is signed. That's not, you know, that's not what we do. We want it to be successful from this point on, because we're your association. And so we have field service representatives who would work with you and the new superintendent on how to be successful, goal-setting, whatever topics you might want to, might want to include. As far as the, the costs, our, our fees are based on your enrollment. It's a, a scale. And so based on your current enrollment, that would be the cost. If you were to choose the stakeholder interview at the end, or possibly the focus groups at the beginning, then those would be added in to determine your final, your final cost based on those fees. And so that shows you the, the optional services there. Also, if you choose to do, we would also, you know, the last thing that's listed there is additional advertising beyond our linking to all of the job sites. But if you would choose that you wanted to have posted in publications such as Education Week or AASAs Journal or whatever, we would put that together for you, and then we would just pass that cost on to you, that the cost of the advertisement would be, you know, no extra cost, as far as, for us, it would just be at the actual cost. Again, the way things are these days, it's, it's usually very successful to just post things via the different sites that we're linked to, and the word gets out there very quickly. I don't think that, you know, publication advertising is a thing of the past, but it's just not chosen by, you know, too many districts anymore. As I said, the follow-up training is important for your new superintendent and you as a, as a board, as far as your team during your first six months with that new superintendent. We would provide that follow-up training. Also, we would link, we work very closely with IESA, the School Administrators Association. And they have, they have a mentoring program that we, that we work with them on, where somebody would be assigned to or linked to your new superintendent as their mentor. And it would be a West Cook superintendent as well, and they would work with your new superintendent in a variety of mentoring ways as well. So we help to facilitate that, too. Why, why we think you should choose this? I mean, obviously, everybody who before me, you know, they, they did a good job, but we, we just like to think we do it better. And, and so, you know, we're responsible only to you as a board. You know, over the last five years, ninety-five percent of the superintendents that we have placed are still in their same position through their first contract or for three years. It's pretty significant, because superintenances are very transient positions. You know, I, you know, I was very fortunate. When I was superintendent in Hillside, I was there for fifteen years. And that doesn't happen very often, especially in Proviso Township. You know, there's a lot of, lot of movement. I know many of your previous superintendents here, all the way back to Joe Scolari. So, you know, I, you know, did work with them and Randy Tanner and so on. So, I mean, it's, it's not something that happens very often where a superintendent stays a long period of time in a district, whether it's their choice, board choice, or whatever. But we're very, we're very proud of the fact that the superintendents we've placed over the last four to five years, you know, about ninety to ninety-five percent of them are still in those same positions. And that's, that's a key thing. It gives you the continuity that you as a district need. It gives your buildings continuity, it gives your, your community continuity. Most importantly, your kids, you know, have that. Most importantly, your kids, you know, have that continuity in school leadership as well. As far as a statement of assurance, you know, we're with you until the process is done. If I bring you a slate of six and you interview them and you say, Al, you know what, that right person's not there. We go back and we'll reopen the search and just keep going until that right person is there, and, at, at no cost. As far as a guarantee of services, within that first year, if at, after the end of that first year, if your new superintendent leaves either on their own, by their choice, or by your choice, we'll do another search at no cost as well. Doesn't happen very often. I mean, I think in the, you know, 11 years that I've been doing this, I've only had to work with a district one time where the superintendent made it to Christmas time, and then, and it was because they came from out of state. Their wife didn't like the Chicago area, wanted to go back to Texas where they were from, and so, you know, it all, it was a big deal. It wasn't a big deal because the board understood. But, you know, usually at the end of that first year, you know, you know even before the end if that person's going to stay or, or you want them to stay or not. And so we can work with you in that situation should that be the case. As far as experience in Illinois, you know, we've worked in 83 of the, you know, however many counties there are, close to 100, and we've, we've served 656 school district with searches, and that was prior to this year. Right now, we're, we, meaning all of our consultants, you know, as far as IASB, we're working on about, I think, 13 searches right now, you know, between the eight of us. So we've served 656 of the districts out of the 850. So we're, you know, we're your advocate. And again, you know, we're your association, you're a member of the association, so our cost usually tends to be significantly less than the for-profit firms because you're already paid to be a part of IASB. And so our costs are considerably scaled down to reflect that. So, you know, I'd, I'd be happy to work with you. I've been, you know, very familiar with your district for a long time in this part of Cook County, and I, I have a pretty good sense of the needs of, of school districts in Cook County, so I'd be happy to work with you if I had the chance. And right now, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I feel like you kind of already did, but I, I have a question I have to ask all of y'all, so.
Sure.
When you look at our school district and what you know about us, and then you think about your typical, the other districts you've worked with, is there anything that stands out about us that would, you know, merit special consideration or a differentiator of us versus them that you would be taking into account as you went through the search?
I think, well, that, I think first thing comes to mind, you know, just working in West Cook County is diversity. I think that's a key thing, and, and I, I know that, I recognize that. I was in a community that was a very diverse community. Even working in, you know, for the West 40, you know, doing, you know, the health life safety work and so on there, you know, working in all the schools, you know, I, I end up, have a pretty fair understanding of, of the makeup of, of districts, and I think that's a key thing. And, you know, we want, we want to maximize that in every school district that you're a part of. And you as a board, you know that that's one of the main, you know, main functions is to make sure that everything is highlighted to its, to its max. And if diversity is, is a, a factor in, in your communities, which I believe that it is, knowing that it's, you know, this part of, of West Cook and Proviso Township, we want to make sure that we're sensitive to that in the process itself. You know, I think that that's, you know, that's a reality, and, and we reach out to as many organizations as we can that represent different groups, different ethnic groups, and try to make sure that we're attracting candidates who can hopefully work within that expectation. I, I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
And that, and that's just the first thing that comes to mind.
I had a question about the fees for the stakeholder input. Let's say we took that option and we wanted to do interviews with teachers and students. Would you guys typically consider that two different fees, do it on two different days?
No, it'd just be one. What we normally would do, and what, in fact, I just did this the other night in a district out in central Illinois, is we try to, if it's two, let's say it's two semifinalists, you're two finalists. And so we try to work with the board and, and how might serve those stakeholders best. And what that could be is that a group of stakeholders would interview candidate A while candidate B is interviewing with you as a board, and then we switch. And let's say about hour and a half or whatever, and then they would come back and they would switch. If you had two different groups of stakeholders, we would readjust that schedule to try to accommodate that as best. Answer to your question is no, it'd just be one fee. That's all you really wanted to know.
That was going to be the second part, like how would that look?
Yeah, yeah. You know, it, it takes some scheduling, you know, work to, to do it if you have more than one group of stakeholders, which is fine, though we'll, we'll work that out. But generally, we would just do it in, in one evening or one afternoon and evening, and it would just be one, one fee. Any else? Yes, sir.
Thank you so much for your time this evening for the presentation.
Oh, sure.
So your rates are very reasonable, as you said, compared to your for-profit competitors. And you noted, and, and I, there's a lot of evidence here to support the assertion that you do it a bit better than they do.
I like to think we do.
You, you, you've made a compelling case. My question is, when you see people pay significantly more for one of your competitors, in your view, why are they doing that?
Well, that's a great question.
Thank you.
I think, well, I, I think part of it is depending on, depending on the area, you know, in the suburban area, you know, sometimes that's not a factor. Sometimes, you know, I know it's a fiscal decision on your part. I'm a former superintendent, you know, I, I know that, you know, you're paying a big chunk of money, whether it's ours or any of theirs. And so sometimes it's not a factor, and I think some districts, and this sounds bad, but it looks better if they have a, a more known firm, a, you know, nationwide known firm, of which, you know, there are, to, to do their search. And it looks better to their public, they, they like that piece of it, and then the cost is not a factor. And I get it, I don't necessarily, you know, agree with it, but I, I get it, you know. We did the search for the district where I live, and I was very pleased because it was going to cost less than had they chosen another firm as a taxpayer. And so I, I think that, you know, I think that's probably one reason. I don't think there's a, you know, it's hard to judge the quality because they all, everybody does a good job. And chances are, the pool of candidates that they get is going to be, pretty much, we know it's going to be the same pool of candidates that we get. And so that's not, you know, we're not drawing different people, you know. They're not drawing all-stars and we're drawing, you know, you know, the losers in the World Series. You know, I have to say it that way. But I, I think that's, you know, I think that's the, the thing, is you're getting the same pool of candidates. So there's a variety of reasons, but mostly I think it's a fiscal piece.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. And an image thing, and you know, the firms, you know, the firms tend to have, you know, pretty well-known names in some of the bigger suburban communities that are more affluent, and they can do that, and they can hire.
Makes total sense, thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else? How else can I?
I have two questions.
Sure.
Other than you and Dr. Ayala, is there anybody else that would be part of a team for our search?
Hopefully so. In fact, we're in the process, we've got, you know, somebody new who's coming on, it's going to be joining us after the holidays, and, you know, so there's some training obviously involved in that, but they'll be able to help with that. And we, we help each other out because we have to. And so even in terms of reading the applications, because that's all done, you know, they're all online applications and material, it's all online. So, you know, somebody who, who's working out of Southern Illinois, one of my colleagues, can read applications with me, and then we can talk and compare notes. So, you know, and the answer to that question, yes, somebody could very likely be, besides just Carmen and myself.
Okay. And then for districts that do choose focus groups, how many days? Is it like a one-day thing, a two-day thing?
The initial focus groups for input?
Yeah, like, yes.
Yeah, that's just one day. Often, it's, what, done in a variety of different ways. Sometimes we would come in and be in the district during the day and leave it up to maybe the superintendent to set up a schedule of possibly, you know, 10 at a time to be able to come and meet with me, you know, maybe in each of the buildings, maybe 10 staff members and so on. And then in the evening, have it open to where parents could be invited in and meet with me. Trying to keep the numbers small, I mean, I've had a whole gym of people come and wanted to talk about some stuff with their new superintendent with just me, and that was a lot of fun. But usually, we try to, you know, keep it, you know, a little bit more narrow. Sometimes, you know, sometimes they're handpicked groups, you know, where, you know, the superintendent or, you know, board might say, okay, we want, you know, you know, a group of, you know, a couple PTA or PTO members, you know, your union representation, you know, department heads, whatever you want, administrators, as well as some community representation. So it's up to you, and I could certainly work with, with you or with Bob or however you wanted to do that as far as setting things up for that, should you choose to go that way. But it would best be one day. Usually, because the staff is here during the day, it would be during the day or right after school, and then, you know, parents' community would be in the evening. What else?
Thank you for coming out and giving your time.
Thank you so much for having me, I appreciate it. Can I ask you, your, your plans as far as timing for hiring, for choosing a firm? Because I know it has to be done, you know, obviously by a vote in open session, so.
So I have the, on, on the committee, the superintendent search committee, I have to report on this in a few minutes, so if you stick around, you'll hear a discussion of that. Well, I don't know if you'll know, but you'll hear the discussion.
But I, I will leave you to, you know, to, to do your, you know, deliberating, and then you've got my, you know, my cell number and so on, you can text me or whatever, should, should you choose to go with us, and I appreciate that, so. All right? Thanks a lot for your time, I appreciate it. I'll see you in a couple of weeks. Have a good night.
Okay, number eight, the interim superintendent report. Dr. Hubbard?
All right, good evening. November is National Board Appreciation Month, so we want to recognize each of you. During this month, we are proud to honor and celebrate the dedicated members of our Board of Education and your unwavering commitment to keeping students at the center of every decision that reflects the very heart of our mission. When you came in, there's some bags on your table, there's a little appreciation gift in there, and there are some cards from, or a card from students. They just wanted to show their appreciation to you, so please make sure you, you don't forget your bag for that. It is my honor to present this year's State of the District. We are grounded by being physically responsible and making sure our finances are all in order to really ensure that it drives our core values of really making sure that we are student-centered. It was interesting to hear one of the candidates talk about that she did her dissertation on joy because that's truly why we're in this business. We want to make sure our students are here and they have joy in everything that they do. And I love this movie, it's just a great movie. The first thing we're going to talk about is our attendance and enrollment. And this message is for parents. Parents, we cannot teach empty seats. We need your child here each and every day that they are healthy enough to be in school. And our data does show that the more students are in school, the better they perform long-term. So we, we do need them here. As you could see, since 2021, our enrollment has hovered around 700 students. We're down a little bit from where we were last year, but just a couple of students, and this is normally times you start transferring in and out. And normally, we settle in around January or February. I believe about a month and a half ago, I did share with you some trend enrollment data form that I keep up. You still have access to that, but we try to update that every month so you can see where students are falling per grade level, so you do have access to that. Our student demographics has been changing. Since 2022, we are hovering around 50% of our students identified as low-income, so we know there's a need in the community, and we do a great job of trying to meet that need, whether it's providing free school supplies, providing free field trips, or, or just providing the wraparound services for our students. Here, you can also see that our percentage of students with an IP has increased 3% from last year to this year. And this is valuable data because we use this information to really plan for the future move forward and making sure we align our resources to the needs of our students. In terms of absenteeism, I'm going to say it again, parents, you can't teach those empty seats. Make sure your child is here. Chronic absenteeism is defined as missing a total of 18 days in a school year, which is about a month. Missing a whole month? To make it, put it more perspective, it's 135 hours of instruction. That's what a student misses if they're identified as chronic absentee. You'd see our percentage has been going down for the past couple of years. 20% is still way too high. State average is 25%, we're below that, but we'd like to get that number even lower. Currently, just for the school year, we are at 9.1%, which puts us on track to probably end the school year around 20%, but we want to try to get lower than that. But just imagine what someone could learn with an extra 135 hours of instruction in anything, because that's what 18 days equivalents to.
Just a real quick question on this number, I think you answered it, I just want to make sure I understand this. So the 9.1% that we're seeing right now for this year, that's not for time to now? That's, that's us saying, okay, like, that 9.1, I can't compare to the 20.58 rate?
No, you cannot.
Okay. So this is sort of a meter that slowly rises to get to, okay.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
We hope it doesn't rise to 20, but we're on track to get 20.
I was just going to say, what did we do this year that we, okay, thank you.
And on this data, the 25% in the 22, 23 year, was that coming out of COVID and we're still instructional online learning, or was that, I, I'm getting fuzzy with the dates?
That, that's coming out, there was in-person learning.
Okay.
There's right coming out where they were coming to school. And, and which is super high, the state, the state is down also. I think the state was around 30%, they're, they're lower. And so it is trending down across all districts, but it's still higher than it's ever been. We need to get that number down because that's a lot of instruction, 135 hours. Next, we'll look at our kids' assessment data. Our kids' assessment for kindergarten looks at three areas of development, social and emotional development, language and literacy development, and math to assess our students in their readiness. Our kindergarten students are outperforming the state on two out of three of those metrics. So it's really nice to see, we have a really, really strong kindergarten program. We want to continue to promote that program. We currently do have space in our kindergarten program for anyone who has a child looking to enroll in kindergarten. We'd gladly take them if they just reach out to the district because we have space for about, maybe about 13 more kindergartners.
Tell your friends and neighbors, if you see a kid on the street, tell their parents.
Does the newly deployed math curriculum extend to kindergarten as well?
Yes, it does. Now, looking at our FastBridge proficiency data, the next four slides and look at our student proficiency in reading and math for our local benchmark assessment. Highlighted there in orange, I just looked at the fall assessments from last year to this year. I didn't highlight the fall 23, 24 assessments, we didn't want to go back that far. But if you see where our kids are assessed in fall by the spring, they're much higher in terms of their proficiency. So we have an upward trend. And for this year in ELA, for our kindergarten and first grade, you can see that we're starting off the year higher, so we should be projected to end higher at the end of the year where they end up landing. So it's a nice trend to see for the past two years, and we expect the same trend for this year. This shows the data for our second through eighth graders. For the, for this group, our fall is a little bit lower. So it tells us we've got to put some more support around them during the school year, and the schools are diving into why that is a little bit lower and what they can do from now into the spring with their instruction to really get that higher. But as you can see also for the previous two years, it's been significant jumps in our students from fall, winter to spring. So we meet them where they are and we move them along, along that trajectory proficiency. This is the early math data for kindergarten and first graders. Showing the same positive trajectory that as the reading data did show. But for math, our students are starting to much higher this fall, and with a brand-new curriculum, we're hoping that really accelerates their learning and moves them along faster. I will tell you, I've observed two classes of math for these early grades, and I thought I was observing reading, and I'm a former math teacher, but the curriculum incorporates so much reading into it and so much diving into pictures and analyzing. I was like, is this a reading or is this a math class? I was a little confused. So it's nice to see that, that you couldn't tell that separation because then it really puts everything together for the student. Yes.
Just a real quick question. For, for all, in general, for these, given that we have, especially when you're looking at second through eighth grade, right, we have fewer than 100 students per grade level. So when we look at this, and I'm not trying to take away from the increase at all, but there's a fair amount of variation in the data, right? So it's not like, oh, this is a, a trend that we can see. This is, you know, it's up, but there's a, there's a, you have three kids who have a bad day, and that can affect things for a whole cohort, right?
It can, but the data is showing that they're not having that bad day because they're moving in the positive direction. And, and when we do assess them, we make sure, because we have flexibility, the window's relatively long, whether it's two weeks or three weeks. We tell teachers, look at how your students are doing that day. If this is not a good day to assess them, maybe some of them do not assess. There's to, finish the assessment tomorrow, or they could be pulled out. or they could be pulled out and take that assessment. Because you want to make sure your kids perform their best and have the best opportunity for it.
Thank you for that.
And for our second through eighth graders math, they are starting off a little bit lower. So once again, we got to look at how can we get them to move and accelerate their growth. But the trend has been the same for, we're seeing some nice positive projections for them. So that was proficiency. But for accountability, we also look at growth. And we're here in the business of education to move students. Wherever they start off, wherever they come at with us, our goal is to move them. So not only did our data show that we've taken students and proficiency levels and moved them along that trajectory, but we really want to look at our growth, how we move them and are they growing substantially? So this looks at our growth data. So the next few slides show our reading data from multiple different lenses. Here at Garfield, 87% of the students have made, have been making their growth in reading. Overall, 83% of our students are making growth in reading for their goal. So that's the two highlighted columns I just saw. So we're really making growth and overall it's up to expected growth is green. You want to see a lot of green and we're hoping to get to blue. This breaks it down by grade level. And it shows that our first, fifth and sixth graders need some additional support. So we'll look at how we support them. They are green, but we want to make sure we move them further along with everyone else. And as you see, our seventh graders did have some blue there. And then lastly, looking at that same exact data, just in a different subgroups, this shows that 83% of our students in unstable housing are making growth, which tells us that we're really meeting the needs of our most vulnerable students. It may be a small population, but it's still the fact that they're moving significantly and they're making their growth goals. That's huge. These next few slides look at the same data, but for math and seeing what are the growth. And you see our expected growth of math is a positive 0.21 is very significant. And this is without a new math curriculum. So now that we're focused on a new math curriculum, we're hoping that it really dives in and this data moves even further. Once again, Garfield had the highest with 94% of their students making their growth goals. So they're not only doing it in reading, they're also doing it in math. So a huge shout out to them over there at Garfield. Yes.
Has there been any discussions about, you know, when you look at Garfield and Betsy, like what they're doing differently at the schools or is it just a factor of?
It's a fact. So Garfield's at 94%. Overall, we're at 91%. It's a factor of 3%. It's really, they were just the highest.
It's within a rounding error?
It is.
Okay.
Here's looking at the data in terms of grade level. And we see that fourth, fifth, sixth and seventh grade have the highest expected growth. That's all blue. That's great to see. And now it given them a new curriculum and new resources. And so that tells us the intervention we put in place last year are really working. But now that we're meeting the needs of the students with interventions, how are we going to meet the needs of the students as they progress further along that continuing learning and at the higher end of that spectrum? And that's what we have to do, so. When looking at the data and subgroups, we see that 87% of our students within IP met their growth target. So you see in reading, we really targeted, we met the needs of our students. A homeless students and now we're looking at students with the IP in math are making their growth targets. So that's great to see. Once again, we're meeting the needs of students that really need the assistance. So that was our local FastBridge assessment. Now looking at our IAR assessment, our state assessment that we take annually. And I'm going to say we're not there yet because we started with this current strategic plan with our students at 27.4% and currently that 55.1%. And that's huge growth over the past four years. And as you see, we're higher than the state in ELA in terms of proficiency. So that is great to see. I think one of the search terms pointed out when they looked at the history of our district. So how do we continue to push forward? And I've mentioned some, I think we're getting to that point where we're going to plateau a little on our data. We're probably about a year, year and a half away from it. But we got to start putting things in place now till we get that continued growth and we keep meeting the expectations because we're moving our kids along in terms of their proficiency and where they are. Same thing for math, we're not there yet. We started at 13.8% under this current strategic plan and we're at 30.9% for math. You did see in the previous slides for our local benchmark assessment, those grades had a lot of blue in terms of their growth. So that means they're closing that achievement gap to get to this proficiency. And that's why you see it keeps moving along higher up. We're hoping with this new curriculum, it really accelerates that growth. So then we can get closer in that math achievement. Same thing as in the local benchmark assessment, not only do we look at proficiency, we look at growth. We want to make sure we're constantly moving students no matter where they are. If they're at a high level, low level, medium level, we want to push them along that trajectory and continue to move them. So in terms of growth for IAR ELA, there's the past four years in terms, five years, I'm sorry, of data of where we are with our students. We had a really big bump in 2022 and that's where, coming off the pandemic, I think just everyone came back from the assessment and they really charged. We dropped a little, but you see in ELA, we've been increasing steadily since then. And the same, our math data shows the same trajectory. We had that big bump in 2022. We dropped down. I think that's more level where we are, but then since then, we've been increasing that trajectory. It's not been as much growth as we've seen in reading, but I think with this curriculum that we're implementing, we're going to see the accelerated growth there. And then looking at our five essentials. This is a great survey that the University of Chicago has been doing for, I think, the past 30 plus years. Really at five areas to see how organizations and school districts particularly can achieve and improve. Research shows that schools strong in at least three of the five areas are 10 times more likely to see student gains. And I think that's shown in our data. You see, for the first time, we are classified as organized. We are green in three out of the five areas and our data's moved along that trajectory. Schools that are not strong in one area see a 10% decrease in their student performance. And that's based off their 30 years of data and research that they have of working and doing a survey across the state. It's nice to see in our data, out of all five areas, as you see how much we have grown from last year to this year. And that's, it's all positive in those five areas. There's no negative growth there. So we haven't went backwards in anywhere, but in any area, there's always opportunities for improvement. And based on our data, the areas where we have to improve are our student peer relationships, our student teacher trust and safety. And that's feedback we're getting from our students in terms of what they want to see improved. Those areas were not low. You see, we did see positive growth in both of them, but they're classified as neutral. So now how can we get them from neutral and get them to a green or positive area? So each school's leadership team is diving into their individual school data because this data is broken down by the school. This is the district data and seeing how they can improve at their school and how can they meet the needs of the areas where they could continue to grow. Yes.
Do we know what percent, I know there was a, on the earlier slide, they talked about, you know, where there wasn't enough data. So clearly we have enough to say this. Do we know what the actual participation rates were for the different years that we took this? Like, do we have more people taking the survey? Or is it kind of consistent with, we always get X percent, but that's enough?
No, it's one of the, for students, it's 50%. And I think for parents, it's 20% is the bare minimum. They do give us a breakdown of that. I did take that slide out. I can't share that with you in the next newsletter where it shows how many took the survey. But it's a nice little try to share that with you. And then looking at equity journey in the continuum. This is great data to look at, but I do want to put a caution out there that this data is basically two years old. And that's just how the state puts it out. So this data is from 2023, 2024. So that's the yellow data that you're looking at. I just want to point that out, but that is the most recent data we have from the state. This is what's on the state's website. The reason we went down in student learning for that 1.52, if you remember, that was the year that Phil Stevenson was classified as target. It was because one of their subgroups was low. They're now classified as commendable. So next year's data, you're going to see that much higher because they already got that classification because they moved that subgroup. But this data is from 2023, 2024. But it's the most, the newest data we have to share with you. I did want to make that point out. And the student learning category is classified as students making significant academic growth, where that one subgroup did not make significant academic growth. That's why that's lower there. I know we have shown this slide plenty of times, but it's so important. I did want to point it out. Just that 50% of our data comes from moving our students in terms of growth and their proficiency. And then another 20% comes from student attendance, chronic absenteeism. I did hear the state is working on changing that percentage for the upcoming year. They haven't put out what that's going to look like now. But just stressing the importance of attendance. We need kids here. The more they here, our data is showing that we are moving them. And just imagine if any of us studied something for 135 hours, how much we'd know about that one topic, whether it's reading, math, science, social studies. That's a total, that's how many hours one child is missing when they're absent for 18 days. Pleased to say all of our schools are listed as commendable for this year. The little asterisk by Phil Stevenson is because once you're identified as target, you have to be commendable for two years in a row in order to get out of that classification. I'm not going to say anymore about this because next month at the December board meeting, principals are going to be sharing out their school data. Each school will share their story of how they're committed to better together and their school improvement plans based off their current data. So each principal will share that with you. All I will share is that we're not there yet. We are very close and you'll see next month to moving a handful of our schools to exemplary. And that's where we'd like to move them to. And that means that we're performing in the top percent of all the schools in the state of Illinois. These are our goals for our current strategic plan. The ones highlighted in green, we have already met. I will just point out the growth that's in green, the 80% and the 85% there. Those are spring data scores. Obviously, we're not in the spring yet. We're just at the fall. And I will tell you for this fall, 83% of our students have met their growth for ELA. So it's higher than that spring goal and 91% for math. So it's even higher than the spring. So that's where we are now in the fall. We're hoping as those other slides have showed you, the winter, they move up a little bit higher. The spring, they move up a little bit higher. We're hoping to continue on with that trajectory. Any question? Yes.
So I know you've stressed attendance quite a bit in your state of the business and I see that we're below. What is we as a district can do to target some of that to help raise that percentage back up?
I think just continue to engage parents and see what is the barrier that's stopping their child from attending school and see how we could meet that need. I know from talking to some parents, some of them have said it was transportation. We've got some parents on the bus because they're like, that's what's stopping them. Some parents were saying fear of the time just of sending their child to school because of what's been going on in other communities around here. And we've had some teachers go walk and pick up some students. Saying, you know, if your child is scared to come to school, I, or you're scared to walk your child to school, I will come help them. So I think really just engaging the parents and seeing what are the needs that is stopping them from bringing their child to school.
But to that point, we are doing that. It's just, these are just intractable problems sometimes.
Yes.
And all great things. How long ago did we start doing that versus when all this started happening? Is this, when then, last 30 days, 40 days?
I think we have been doing it. That's why the percentage has went down for the past three years. So now we've got to see what else can we do for them? We're looking at to see, is it, you know, is it a need that maybe some parents may need some opportunities to have access to the washer and dryers we have here in the schools? Because we have washer and dryers here in the schools. And I think just engaging them more and seeing what are the needs that we haven't met yet.
I imagine that there is a floor for schools generally below which attendance problems do not drop. But there's always some ongoing attendance problems. Do we have a sense of what that percentage might be?
Our goal is to get to 95%. We're at 93% right now. That would be our goal, is to get to 95. And to get our chronic absenteeism down to around 17%, we're hovering around 20%. If we can get it down to around 17%.
Okay, thank you.
And to the point you made earlier, the state is like, what, 25%?
Correct.
So.
We're 5% below that.
Which, which, I'm not saying that that's great. To your, to your point, we're still working to get better, but.
Yes. Any other question? Moving on to learning and achievement. Each month, we want to showcase a grade level. This month, we are showcasing the third and fourth graders and they've put together a video.
When I'm in the pit, I know I'll get it next time.
When I'm in the pit, I take a deep breath and try again.
When I'm in the pit, I know I'm growing.
When I'm in the pit, I ask for help.
When I'm in the pit, I can practice and get the answers better.
When I'm in the pit, I, I, I ask for help.
When I'm in the pit, I compliment myself and my.
When I'm in the pit, I know I'm learning and growing and always try your best. That's why I made this book and now it's.
When I'm in the pit, I might have to use strategies that I was not planning to use.
When I'm in the pit, I use strategies and ways to help me.
When I'm in the pit, I use strategies to help me.
Bye.
I'd like to thank them for the video and find that video for us to share. And then moving on to family community engagement. Our quarter two book is Thunder Boy Junior by Sherman Alexie. I was joining my two great eighth graders that helped me read it to the kindergartners and I'd be going around and reading it to the students. But be on the lookout for the video coming soon. Here's just a little snippet of it. Here's just a little snippet of it. And it's just so nice to see how comfortable our students are around all this equipment because they work with this equipment in after-stu program. So the lighting, the mics, the sound checks, the retakes, they're like, oh, we're familiar. The green screens, they're just so comfortable around it. So it's really, really nice to see that, and a lot of them know how to use it. So like, oh, no, this lighting's not right here. We need to move this here. It's really nice to see that. So they're just taking hold of and taking ownership of that. So it's a nice opportunity for them. We have some upcoming events I'd like to share. On Tuesday, December second, at Forest Park Middle School at 5:00 PM, our Special Olympics basketball athletes will be recognized by the JV and varsity basketball teams. So as a community, we could send them off in style. They're participating in a skills competition on December seventh. So everyone's welcome to come to that. Also, on December tenth, District 209 Superintendent Mr. Mohib will lead a discussion at Forest Park Middle School in the cafetorium on the future and progress of Proviso High Schools. So parents in the community, welcome to come out to that. I will share, we did have two FOIA requests. We had one from Cindy Kovili, who wanted to know, requesting special education data, the number of students in self-contained and where students were. We did provide that data for her. We also had a FOIA request from SEIU, the union, and they wanted to know any food service contracts we had and the number of custodians we had and any contracts we had with custodians. So we did share that information with them. That is all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Hubbard. Number nine committee reports, CAC, Mr. Romo?
All right, so we had our first meeting, and the whole purpose of the CAC, for those of you who may not be familiar, is to provide open and honest two-way communication between the board and the school and the Forest Park community at large. So, you know, families, students, and everybody else. We will be providing feedback to the board on the school calendar, caregiver handbook, and in the student code of conduct. At our first meeting, one of the things we talked about was ways that we could further collaborate and connect with our constituents and every member that, each member that the committee represents. So we want to, really, we want to talk to everybody. So we had a great first meeting. We set the norms for how we're going to operate and conduct our work to meet our committee goals. And committee members were invited to attend the 209 community discussion on December tenth. So thank you, Dr. Hubbard, for mentioning that. And the Special Olympics athlete recognition on December second. And of course, the December board meeting. I'll be here, hopefully, all of you will. And that was it. That was our first meeting.
PPC, we talked about the cleaning routine at the buildings and a little bit about professional development and how to make it clear and better and beneficial for everyone. And the PPC, I mean, the professional development committee was going to meet. And then Superintendent Search, Mr. Romo, Mr. Lyons?
All right, so we had the presentations tonight. I wanted to have a discussion, see what the group thought. Our thought of the next steps would be, take what we heard tonight. You've had the materials for a while since they emailed them. You've heard the firms talk about them. Go home, think about it, write down whatever following questions you, this is just what I'm proposing. So write down whatever questions you have. If there's anything that we want to reach back out to the firms to clarify, whatnot. I'll be putting those together. You can send them to me. And then, once we have that and we've sent them back out, the firms have had a chance to respond, of course, that will be sent back to all of y'all prior to the December meeting. The goal being for December, for us to have a conversation about selecting a service provider after we've had a chance to digest what we've heard and ask questions. But obviously, up to discussion, we could talk about this at any point. Also, during that, now that we've heard a lot more about what the firms have to say, if there are things that we have strong feelings about as a board for the process, right? Hey, we want to do focus groups. We don't want to do focus groups. We want to do a questionnaire upfront. We want to do a questionnaire upfront and interviews at the end. Like, now that we've heard that, let us start, you know, think about that and come to a decision in December about which firm we want and what the general format is going to be specifically around any focus groups, surveys, that kind of thing. So with that, I will leave that. If anybody has any other input to that or has anything to say about it or. Oh, okay. So, yeah. So send any follow-up questions you have to me. Send any, if you have specifically strong feelings about whether you want to do an initial survey or a focus group or things, or anything that you heard, send that to me. I will aggregate all of that together. I will come back to the December meeting, and we will present the results. By the way, thank you all for taking the time to listen to that. I know it was a lot, so I very much appreciate it.
Number ten, items for discussion. Dr. Hubbard, estimated 2025 property tax levy?
Just have two items to go over, to discuss. One is the tax levy, and the other one is a new public, well, a public act that we just make sure we have to mention at each board meeting, and we annually have to do it. So for our tax levy, we look at CPI and how it's been performing historically. Historically, it's been going down. It's on a somewhat uptick right now, but they're projected for it to level off and stay around the 2.93% as it's been staying there. So we use that information to develop our tax levy. Remember, the tax levy is just the district's ask. Just because we ask for a certain amount does not mean we will get that amount. Historically, we have never received what we've asked for. We have always received less than what we've asked for. So our tax levy has two parts. It's made up of your operation levy, what you ask for and what you receive, plus any outstanding bonds and debit we have. Please say, just to the board's great planning, we have no outstanding bonds. So our levy is just based off the revenue that we receive. We are capped at five percent or CPI, whichever is the highest that we cannot go over. But we have to ask for anything at least closest to five percent as we can, just so that we don't leave any money on the table. This year, the district is asking for a 4.91% increase over last year's extension that we received. Just because we asked for that 4.91% does not mean that's what we're going to receive. But it's the max that we can ask for, so that is the max that we are asking for. Yes?
Just to make this point, because every time we talk about this, I feel it's important to underline this because a lot of people don't understand how these taxes work. When, if we did not ask for this, one, we would lose it. We'd never get it again.
Correct.
And two, it would not in any way, shape, or form reduce anyone in this community's property taxes. The state would simply allocate the funds to other school districts, and we would be basically losing money that should otherwise be here in the community. Is that a fair?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the tax levy? Later on, I'll be asking you to vote on the estimated tax levy, so it can be posted for the thirty days. And at the December board meeting, we will be voting on that tax levy. Because we do need the thirty days, that's why our December board meeting is a week later. It's December eighteenth, I believe. So just please note that in your calendar. It's a week later, so we have enough time in between meetings. The other item I want to discuss is Public Act 103, 0394. This act requires all school districts to display this current report, which we are displaying at a board meeting, showing our cash on hand for the past three years and make sure it is less than two, less than 2.5 times our average expenditures. This was a public act that really had people freaking out because when it was first written, it said if you had more than that, you had to spend the money extremely fast. And as you see, we're currently in a position right now where we have not received any revenue from Cook County. So the fact that we have in our policy that we have twelve months in reserves is really working in our favor. I will tell you that I did hear from Cook County that they're releasing the tax bills, and they're going, they're going out soon, and then the collection is in December. They have not given a timeline or turned, when they would turn over that money to taxing bodies, but at least we know they're collecting, they have the bills going out. As of right now, I'm feeling pretty confident that we may not have to ask for a loan as long as they stated their timeline. So at the December board meeting, have more information from you, hopefully from them also, meaning the county, in terms of what their plan is in terms of releasing those funds to us.
So again, just to reiterate some things we've talked about before in these meetings, we keep a large reserve on hand for things like this because this happens all the time, and we have not had to incur debt or debt service or interest and take money away from education to pay debt service because we have maintained what we think are appropriate reserves. Is that a fair?
For the past five to six years, it seems to be a regular occurrence, yes.
Thank you.
So did they fix their system that was causing the issue that couldn't let them?
From what I was told, they went to a new software system. It is now the hardware that is like aging, and the hardware cannot handle the software. So they are working on that. So it's an infrastructure problem. I don't know where they are in terms of fixing that.
And I think you reported at one point that if we did not receive taxing funds from the state, we would have to occur alone or look at occurring alone.
Correct.
Are we still on that same trajectory as your estimate around January, February timeframe? Or do you think it's pushed back, or do you think we have to accelerate that sooner?
I think it's pushed back now that they're getting the tax bills out. If they fall through with getting them out and they do the collection in December like they're saying they're going to do, I think we could probably push that back to around February, March and wait and see and make sure we get that revenue.
Okay, thank you.
So just because that's, before we'd even think about applying for a loan or qualifying for it, that's not, we'd need the money in February?
Correct. We don't need the money until June. We should be good to go all the way to June. But it does take about two months to go through the process to go for the loan. So we'd have to start that if we do need to go that way.
So it's more of a precaution at this point than anything else?
Correct.
Thank you.
And unfortunately, there's a handful of districts and taxing bodies that are going through that process now already received a loan because they've not got, because a lot of districts in their policy, it's just three months in reserves that they keep. So that's what they choose to keep. That's all I have.
May I have a motion to go into closed session to discuss the employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of employees?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now in closed session. All right, we are back now in open session. Number twelve, approval of personnel items. May I have a motion to approve the November Personnel Board Report?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, as discussed in closed session, may I have a roll call?
Jed Burr?
Aye.
Andrew Margalo? Moni Cotton?
Aye.
John Lyons?
Aye.
Steve Romo?
Aye.
Shannon Woods?
Aye.
Monica Angelo?
Aye.
All right, number thirteen, items for action. Under Dr. Hubbard, may I have a motion to consider the adoption of the tax year 2025 estimated property tax levy?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
As discussed earlier, this is the estimated levy that we put out there. Sorry, this is our estimate levy that we're putting out there, asking for the 4.91%, which is the max we could ask for. It'll be posted for thirty days, and then be asked to approve at the December board meeting.
May I have a roll call?
Jed Burr?
Aye.
Moni Cotton?
Aye.
John Lyons?
Aye.
Steve Romo?
Aye.
Shannon Woods?
Aye.
Monica Angelo?
Aye.
Number fourteen, additional matters for consideration from the board.
Two real quick. So first, you all heard when we talked about the CAC, there was mentioned we have some Special Olympic athletes getting ready to go, so congratulations to them. There will, they will be, there'll be an FPMS boys volleyball game coming up that they will be, I'm sorry, basketball game, that they will have a send-off for them. So if you get a chance, come to that. And last, I want to point out, you saw during the state of the district where we saw the progress that our students have made, both in absolute terms and in terms of growth. And I look forward to the day that we no longer have to say post-pandemic. But if you look at how we have come back post-pandemic, we have done really, really well. And I just want to say, I very much appreciate the work of all of the district staff and especially the teachers who have, who did amazing things during the pandemic and have done a lot of work since then to try to, to help our students, and they have. And that has become very clear, so thank you for that.
I'll go fast, in no particular order. Thank you to the PTO for bringing back McTeacher Night, and thank you to the staff that worked it. I know my family enjoyed both nights. Oreo McFlurry is a favorite. High school night was a lot of fun. I saw a lot of families. I saw seventh-grade families, which I hadn't seen before. So thank you to all the families that showed up and all the high schools that participated. And the trunk-or-treat was a lot of fun. Our spooky bus was really great. I want to thank Rochelle and her team for organizing and the Park District for hosting. And as a reminder, we said it, I needed the reminder. Our next meeting is December eighteenth, the third Thursday, not the second Thursday. So we will see you all back then.
Just one more thing. We also have students competing in Special Olympics this Saturday for floor hockey, going for medals. So they're also doing that this Saturday, so we want to give recognition to them also.